Okay, testing, oh, it works. All right. It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First order of business, I'd like to remind you, please, to turn off your cellphones or on silent mode, airplane mode, so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then, second, would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone that's here this evening. We have some special presentations later on, so glad to see all of you here. First order, I'd like to do some introductions for those of you that don't know us up here. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and next to me are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery. Tonight Claudia Lacy is absent. And then, on the end, we have our city engineer Allison Fousky with WSB. And then, we have our public works director Gary Peters, and then our director of administration, Ellie Palfu. She's on the back, she's going to be taking pictures. And then, we have our new city clerk, Ann Meyerhoff. And then, next to me, on my right, we have our city administrator Jasper Krugel. Brian Grimm is our finance director, and then David Abel, our community development director. And then, sitting in for Sarah Sansala this evening, our city attorney is Pete Michaels. Thank you, and welcome. And then, on the end, we have our chief of police Paul Falls. With that, we have a couple of changes to our agenda. So, we will not be seeing Senator Morrison this evening. She will have to come back some other time. She had some things come up, so we'll remove that. And then, we're going to add an item. It's going to be six B as a resolution to approve the city administrator and mayor to authorize officials to, as the authorized officials, to execute state grant applications. We're going to add that as six B. So, with that, are there any additional? And then, also, we're going to be accepting the donations under our consent agenda items. And there's an additional item that was not in our packet, but it came in today. I'm glad to say we have an additional twelve hundred dollars received from Midco for our tree lighting holiday event. So, we have a total of forty-eight hundred dollars so far that we have received in donations for the event. So, thank you to all of our sponsors, and we'll be listing you later on. And with that, I don't have any other changes? Any other changes? All right. With that, then a motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for all. So, we're going to start with our special presentations this evening. We have, like I said, two special presentations recognizing outgoing Laura Sandholm, who has been on our planning commission for sixteen years, sixteen years. So, I just want to say a few things. Unfortunately, it's my mistake, we didn't start recognizing our outgoing planning commissioners soon enough, but now, in the last couple of years, we've started to recognize those that are no longer going to be on the planning commission for various reasons, moving or decided not to re-up. And Laura, Ms. Sandholm, has been on the planning commission for sixteen years, and I've had the pleasure of knowing her because of that, and also serving as the liaison on the planning commission. Ms. Sandholm has also served as the chair for the planning commission for quite a few years, and we want to really recognize her for her time. Of course, it takes a lot of time to be on these volunteer, and this is completely voluntary, volunteer time, and it does take a lot of time. And the city council, I want to say, we really rely on our planning commissioners and our park commissioners to do all of the vetting and kind of the upfront work and the hard work. And when it comes to us, we know it's been vetted, we know that you thoroughly discussed it. So, we really, really appreciate your contributions, not only to the city council, to us as an organization, but to our community as a whole. So, with that, I'm going to ask that Laura come to the podium. I'm going to find my resolution here somewhere. All right. You do not need to state your name and address. We already have that. All right. So, with that, this is a resolution recognizing Laura Sandholm for her contribution to Minutrista through membership on the planning commission. Whereas Laura Sandholm served at Minutrista Planning Commission from two thousand and eight through two thousand and twenty-three, serving as the planning commission chair from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas Laura Sandholm participated in the two thousand and seven Public Facilities Task Force, and whereas Laura Sandholm participated in the two thousand and thirty Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minutrista that we are forever thankful for Laura Sandholm's contribution to the city of Minutrista and for her service to the residents of the city of Minutrista. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Again, I want to thank you for your service, and this is, I think I'm wrong. So, next, we have another resolution, and we would like to recognize Gary Pettis. Gary Pettis, this is actually posthumously, I'm very unfortunate and very sad to say that Mr. Pettis passed away September twenty-eighth, I believe, twenty-ninth. Thank you. However, I knew Gary, too, for many years, being on the park commission first, and then also being on the planning commission. And as, when he was on the park commission, he served as a chair, and then later on, he was on the planning commission. And he was a great asset, again, to both commissions, and we greatly appreciate his contributions to our city, to our commissions, and the advice and things that he gave to the city council, as well as to our city. And his wife Sue is here this evening. Thank you so much for coming, and again, thank you for your dedication allowing him to serve. We know it's days and nights away from family and that. So, I'm going to read this resolution. It's a resolution recognizing Gary Pettis for his contributions to the Minutrista through his membership on the parks and planning commissions. Whereas Gary Pettis was a very active member of the Minutrista community, being appointed to the parks commission from two thousand through two thousand and sixteen, where he served as a vice chair from two thousand and three through two thousand and four. He served as chair from two thousand and five through two thousand and nine, and again as vice chair from two thousand and nine through two thousand and thirteen. Whereas Gary Pettis was a member of the Minutrista Planning Commission from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas Gary Pettis participated in guiding the direction, long-term vision of the city of Minutrista by being a member of the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and whereas Gary Pettis participated in the two thousand and two Citizens Advisory Committee for Green Infrastructure. So, now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minutrista that we are forever thankful for Gary Pettis's contribution to the city of Minutrista and for his service to the residents of the city of Minutrista. Do I have a motion to accept this, to make this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you, motion passes, and this is for your. So, now, you all are welcome to stay, but if you don't want to stay for the fun part, you're welcome to leave as well. I know you probably have a bar somewhere that you're going to. And thank you all for coming. So, with that, that concludes our special presentations for this evening. We don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard, so we will move on to our consent agenda items. They consist of A through J. So, first item is approve our work session meeting minutes from October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. C is approve a conditional offer of employment to Tyler Anderson for police officer position. Yay. D is approve our city of Minutrista not to waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability. E is approve the new off-sale intoxicating liquor license for The Cove Wine and Spirits Incorporated. F is approve AE2S task order number O-six for the bonding bill engineering support. G is a resolution to approve claims. H is a resolution to accept the donations for the holiday tree lighting event, and, like I said, the additional twelve hundred dollars from Midco as well. And then, I is a resolution to approve the agreement with Advantage Property Maintenance Incorporated for lawn mowing services. And J is approve agreement with True Green for fertilization and weed control services. Any questions? Hearing none, then is a motion to approve consent agenda items A through J.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. So, next are our business items. We have two items, one approving our counting, our counting write-in votes for elective offices. Who's, are you taking that?
Actually, Ms. Palfus will do that.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
It just kind of gets, keeps getting handed off. Okay, so, as you can see in your memo, during the two thousand and twenty-three legislative sessions, there were several election administration laws that were changed. One of them is allowing cities to adopt a resolution to only count write-in votes of persons that are registered with the city. This is basically just a time-saving thing, because if, the way we do it now, you have to go through every single ballot, and you have to write down every single name and then put tally marks. So, this makes it just a lot, streamlines it a lot easier. You have a list of anybody, if they do register, and that's all you're looking for. You still have to look through every ballot, but it just makes it go a little faster. So, I did talk to Hennepin County, and as of now, there are seven cities so far that they knew of that had adopted this resolution. I know Carver County, most of those cities have also done that. So, that's what this item is.
Okay, thank you. Council questions, comments?
What happens if someone doesn't know they have to register?
They won't get counted.
And they have to register, what, seven days in advance?
Well, it ends seven days. They can start after, like, the filing period?
Yeah.
And then, up until seven days before the election.
The election, right. That's, that's what I meant.
Yep.
So, if someone mounts a write-in campaign for someone, and nobody knew they had to file, their votes wouldn't be counted?
Correct.
And I do not agree with this.
Yeah, it sounds like I'm just franchise people.
I mean, I don't care one way or the other. I think if you're going to run on a write-in vote, you'd want to know more than seven days that you're going to do that. But you're right, if they don't know they have to register, then that would be. We don't, we don't have to do anything.
No, they, she would just count all the write-in votes.
I know, but couldn't we keep this and be able to announce it some way that they have to register? I mean, isn't there a way to fix this? Because it makes more sense.
It actually would help the candidate out if they knew in advance.
Right.
Right.
And it's, it helps the election judges at the end of the night, because it's a long day, and, you know.
So, is there something we can put into place that says that we will announce something or publish something, or?
Yeah, we would, if this were the, we'd publish it on our website, Facebook. It would be known, but it'd be up to the person to.
To know it, like water.
I mean, you could, you could put it in your newsletter. You could put it, yeah, you could, good point. You could put it in your newsletter, you could put it on your Facebook, you could put it on emails, you could, I mean, there's a lot of different, you could post it at City Hall, not that a lot of people see that, but you could do that. You could send out a notice to all the HOAs.
Yeah, because the example given, if people want to write in Batman or some other name, it's taking up all their time to have to vet that.
I understand. I'm not saying it's not a waste of time. I just think in an effort for transparency for residents, if they take the time to write in people's names, they should be counted. Because the last thing you want is a bunch of residents saying, well, I wrote in so-and-so, why didn't their votes count? And then, you go, well, they had, you had to register seven days in advance. Well, I didn't know that, so you didn't count X many votes that this person allegedly got because you didn't count them because they didn't know.
The only other flip side to that is if people were to write in somebody else's name, let's just say Kathleen, you write in Tom Sawyer's name, and then, you know, thirty other people writing Tom Sawyer's name, but what if Tom Sawyer doesn't want to run? That's, that's, that's the other issue. I think that's what this also kind of addresses. It would only allow people that really want to run to have their names, you know, on the ballot or to be a write-in.
And I'll clarify, this doesn't have to be approved tonight. We can always bring it back, just has to be approved, obviously, before the election.
You'd want it approved sometime, maybe?
I mean, I'd say by spring, if there's any more research you want to do. I'm just saying it's not, you don't have to get it yet or know it tonight. We can always bring it back.
Because this is just for the local offices. This is already done for federal and state.
Right, you have to register? What is the timeframe for registering for state and local, do you know?
I believe it's the same.
The seven days prior to? Okay. Okay. Well, maybe do some more research, find out how many more cities between now and then change it or make.
Can we bring it spring?
Yeah.
Well, and how much of a problem it really is, you know, how much time it really takes to catch all those votes.
Yeah, I don't.
It, you know, it just depends. Yeah, you have to write, because the difference, like I said, the difference is it's, you have to go through every ballot, which we would have to do anyways, but if, you know, say there's only one person that registered for a write-in, it's quicker to go through because you're just looking for that one name. Whereas if there's multiple people that are getting written in, you have to literally write down their names and put tally marks next to them, you know, to.
Yeah.
And then combine it all together.
Is that like three people or thirty people?
To do it?
Or, you know, it must be kind of a history or?
How many write-in, how many, how many tend to write in on these elections for cities, small cities?
I don't know as far as Minutrista goes.
You have to go across that. Yeah.
I mean, because the school board election had a hundred and ten write-ins total.
Really?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Not when you consider the other five thousand votes cast.
I still think there's a lot of write-ins.
Yeah, that's a lot of write-ins.
There's a ton of write-ins. I wouldn't have expected any within.
But now, what if all a hundred of those were the same, for the same person, and that person didn't know they had to register?
They still wouldn't have won.
They wouldn't have won, but it'd be good to know, like, you know, this person got a hundred and ten votes, maybe next time they will register if someone, if people liked them that much and they didn't know. I just don't like the idea of saying, no, your votes won't be counted because whoever you voted for didn't know they needed to register. I'm not saying it's likely to ever happen, it's just for transparency reasons, I don't like it.
Okay, well, I don't want to step on freedoms, and so, unless you're proposing, that's what you're saying, so, that's what you're saying. So, unless, I guess unless we can be convinced that we're not stepping on freedoms, we kind of have to pull back. So, yeah, we'll bring it up again, please.
We're not trying to convince you either.
It's an option that, that we could or can do or don't have to do. So, we'll bring it back in, in the spring, and I think, yeah, number one, how many other cities are going to do it? Number two, how many write-in votes do we generally get besides Mickey Mouse, or let's even count Mickey Mouse? Because a lot of times that, no, seriously, that has happened in the past. We have had Mickey Mouse, Batman, I mean, you name it. And then, also, is it a problem if somebody, so let's say Kathleen writes in Tom Sawyer, but Tom Sawyer doesn't want the position? Is that, and what if, I've, I've heard of that, where, where somebody was written in not knowing that they were written in, and they actually won. This happens in really small communities a lot of times, not in big communities, so. And then, they're like, no, I didn't want to, and here's, here's an example, Marv Johnson, that happened to him, Mayor Johnson, you know, in Independence. Anyhow, that actually happened to him, it was over forty years ago, but anyhow.
So, it's possible.
It is possible, it is, yeah.
But then, you have to resign.
It is, so, let's say, let's say somebody gets elected that didn't know they were on the ballot, they would win. They would have the choice to either serve or to resign. If they would serve, then they'd just be like a normal council member or mayor or whatever. If they would resign, there would be a temporary appointment, and then, whenever we can hold the.
Another election.
Special election, then we would do that, and then, there would be another election.
But I think this, the special election has to be, is there a timeframe, and do you know, Mr. Michaels, that you have to have a special election?
Mayor, council, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. There is a timeframe, what it is, I can't tell off the top of my head.
So, if this were to happen, for instance, the next general election would be two years out, and I think that timeframe is too long. I think it has to be within six months. Is that correct?
The formula, do you know it?
I think I do know, I, well, I think I do know. So, like, if it's the first, if they resign right away.
Yeah.
They would be on the next regular special election, so that could be within.
That could be two years.
The next year or the year after that. If they resign, let's say, and they only have, they have less than two years left of their term, then you disappoint somebody until the regular, if that answers your question.
I didn't think you could wait two years, yeah, okay.
I think it's two years is, if that's the window. That's kind of the cutoff.
She resigned before the two years, so she had two years and six months or something, or eight months. And so, therefore, there had, she, her special election was in November of that year.
Six months later, basically. Yeah, yeah, if that's the timeframe, if they would do it right away, then there would be, I think, the next general election.
So, anyhow, we can just have those answered, because it's interesting, anyway. It probably would never happen here, but it would be interesting.
You never know.
Yeah. All right, so we'll bring this back in the spring. Next, we have approve, let's see, I'm sorry, approve the city administrator and mayor as authorized officials to execute state grant applications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, I had received this note from AE2S today that they had thought that we had another meeting this month on the twenty-seventh, and there's some grant applications. I handed out a little packet to everybody that kind of shows deadlines and kind of our strategy for grants related to our water infrastructure projects. What this resolution does is it authorizes the city administrator and mayor to sign these grant applications so we can get them out in time. So, there's a series of them for the, for the state side. If we need one of these for a federal grant, we will then get a resolution for that, too. So, this essentially allows us to get the first grant out in time so we can apply for these water infrastructure projects. So, that's what this is, kind of last minute, I apologize for that, but if there are any questions, please, please let me know.
Would this involve expense for writing these grants? Would we have some outside, so are we giving authority to then spend that money to write the grants?
So, I can, if I may, address that. We already have some task orders that are kind of associated with that piece of grant writing. It's very minimal, a lot of these are just pretty small, a couple pages of just answering questions, and then, if you get to the next level, there might be some additional expenses. If we get to that, then we would come to council again, if there are additional engineering, you know, things like that. A lot of that goes in parallel with the project that you're applying for, so it's project costs as opposed to grant writing costs. So, a lot of these are pretty simple, like even one page, the federal ones are very short, surprisingly, but once you get into that, then they get a little bit more involved. So, I don't anticipate additional costs for this outside of just some minimal things that we already have budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
It's basically just being able to put our signatures on it, either mine or Jasper's. That's what we need, but good question. Any other questions? All right. So, then, is there a motion to approve the city administrator and mayor as authorized officials to execute state grant, well, it should say state and/or federal grant applications?
This one, I can clarify, this is just state.
Okay.
If we do federal, if we need something, we'll bring that forward.
Okay.
They have a specific one just for the state grants.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And that concludes our business items, so we will move on to administrative staff reports. We'll start with Ms. Fousky.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of council. Quick update on the street project. The contractor is finishing up with seed and sod. They should be done in the, in the next day or two here. They've also, there's also another subcontractor out there preparing the driveways. They will have two crews out paving the bituminous driveways starting tomorrow. The concrete and paper ones are already complete, and then, the, the plan is to get the final lift of pavement on Thursday. It might take two days, so that might spill over into Friday, but, so we're looking at wrapping that up here this week, and then, there will be some, some additional items, as there always are with projects of this magnitude, that will be addressed in the spring, but the bulk of the project is winding down and ready to be completed this week.
Congratulations.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, project.
So, I have a question on the seeding and sodding. Obviously, I mean, it's getting so late in the season, and what if the sod doesn't take? I mean, are they going to have time to get the sod take, to take? What about the seed? Is that going to germinate and survive, or will they come back in the spring again?
That's a good question. Thank you for bringing that up. So, we are okay. I did, I did consult with a specialist at MinDOT just to make sure, when, when we got that cold snap in October, and we were looking at what we would need to do to pivot, so I was consulting with an expert, because I'm not an expert in that, in that realm. But we are in an, in an area where we can, we can get sod placed up until it freezes. And then, we've, we've got a seed matrix that, we still have some warm, the soil temperatures are warm enough that it can start to germinate, they'll go dormant over the winter. Now, to answer your question about, you know, what happens in the spring, so, there's a warranty on the sod, thirty days, that the contractor has to maintain it. So, what will happen is the sod is, has been going in, we haven't started that clock for the project. We'll start that in the spring when the temperatures warm up, and we know that that sod can start to grow. They'll maintain it. After that thirty days, the sod will be inspected. Anything that doesn't pass inspection would be replaced. Thirty-day clock starts again. Seed is a little bit different because just the way it grows, it takes a little bit longer, but basically, in order for seed to be considered acceptable, it has to be at least four inches of height. There's, there's different seeds in the mix we use, some is temporary to get that stabilization immediately.
Rye grass?
And then, yes, and then, we have Kentucky bluegrass mix comes up afterwards. And so, there has to be adequate coverage, four inches high through, for the seed to be acceptable. So, it's the same kind of deal, we'll just keep an eye on that. If we're seeing areas that aren't coming up next, you know, when we have some good weather next year, it would be covered under punch list items that they would have to come back and correct.
Okay, all right, great. Anything else? Any questions? Then we'll move on to Jasper.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just have a short update. Obviously, we've been planning for this holiday tree lighting event on November thirtieth. That is coming up. All things are, all, we're firing on all cylinders. Gary and his crew are really stepping up to kind of do some last-minute kind of tweaks or finish some things that they've been working on, so, you start seeing a little bit of activity over there, maybe some lights going on the tree and some other things happening, so that is, that's, that's happening. It looks like the weather, I mean, it's warm right now, it's, looks like it's going to start cooling off maybe around Thanksgiving, but we'll see. I don't really trust it much, so hopefully, it's nice weather when we can do that, so. And tomorrow, I don't know, might steal some thunder from the mayor, but she can talk about it a little bit. We're going on this, the bonding bill tour event that we've been invited to in Excelsior, so we're going to be presenting, and by we, it's the mayor, Whelan's going to be presenting. We've had a nice little gift bag, we got some maple syrup from our local vendor here, donated, which is great. I think we got thirty-eight-ounce bottles, so that's a pretty significant amount of maple syrup. And then, we got some cookies and some jerky, just some little snacks for the representatives to kind of get them through their long day. So, hopefully, that will go well. I think at the next meeting, we can give a little feedback, see how we think it went, and I don't know what the next steps will be, you know, likely hurry up and wait until they actually start entertaining some of these bonding bill ideas. Also, tomorrow, the mayor and I are going to be going to the Highway Seven Corridor Coalition Meeting, the first one that, kind of the, the cities on, on Highway Seven are going to participate in. City of Minnetoka is kind of taking the lead on this, I believe, it's over in Minnetoka, so more to come on that. I think it's really looking at the corridor itself and how it can be improved to serve the communities better, working hand in hand with MinDOT, and hopefully, come up with a, a study or something that can kind of guide the, the direction of that corridor into the future. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other staff reports? David, there's no planning commission meeting, correct?
As of right now, we do not have a scheduled planning commission. We do have an application that's in, but it's been deemed incomplete, so there's a slight possibility if that does become complete, we might need to have one, so I will be at the ready in case of that, but as of right now, it, like I said, is deemed incomplete, so we would not be having a meeting.
Okay. And if, if you did have a meeting, it's the twenty-seventh?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, let me know then.
Okay.
Okay.
Will do.
Unless somebody else wants to attend. Okay. Um, I didn't think so. All right, um, so yeah, I'll just do a quick update as well. So, um, as, um, Mr. Krugel said, we got an invitation, the mayor and administrator got an invitation from Minnetoka to participate in this, um, Highway Seven Corridor Coalition. Uh, it, it was sent out to myself and I believe it's gonna be mayors and administrators from different cities along the corridor. So we'll keep you posted. I know some of you are very interested in that. And we'd invite you, but they only invited us, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, all right, and of course, um, I'll be there tomorrow for the bonding tour as well. I've been practicing my presentation. All right. Um, then I was at the Northwest League and our, um, speaker was, um, Kelly Grimm, right, from Three Rivers Park District? That's her name, right? Yeah, Grissom, Grissom, thank you. Um, not Grimm, I was looking at Grimm. Grissom. And, um, so, and here's the thing, when we were talking about, um, grant applications before and she was saying it is really hard for the cities out here to get these grants. And the reason is, not a couple of reasons, one, because we have higher incomes. And then the other reason is, um, because of our population densities and such. So there's a lot of things that they look at. So a lot of times we don't qualify, which is really sad and what we really are up against. So I do know how, how that goes with grant applications. But she was just kind of telling us the, um, the way that these trails become, come to fruition can take sometimes ten and fifteen years. So we've been waiting for the trail connection between Kings Point Road and then going across Six Mile Marsh and, um, connecting with Dakota Rail Trail here. And, uh, that's gonna take a long time. Because they only work with willing sellers and there's a couple of properties that they would need to acquire. And so far, they, they haven't been interested in selling. So that was Northwest League. And then, um, also later on this week, I'll be attending with, uh, Councilmember Refkin, a Personnel Committee meeting. And then I'll also be doing a, um, all-staff mayor's meeting on Wednesday. And then we're also meeting with the Lions Club to go, kind of go over some of the, um, uh, intricacies or the details of the wine and beer tent. The other thing I was gonna ask, uh, do you have a list of the, um, sponsors for the event? If we could just, uh, give them some recognition here this evening? I know it's, um, Kennedy and Graven, WSB, AE2S, um, Midco now as well. Uh, let's see, it was, um.
Curbside?
Curbside, Dan, Doran.
Kennedy and Graven, WSB, Excel Energy.
Excel. Okay, so we want to thank all of our, um, sponsors and participants in that. I also want to say a big thank you to our staff, Gary and your crew. Thank you very much for all the extra time that you've put into it and to, um, Ally and to Jasper as well um, for supporting this and for moving forward with it. I, I've talked to a lot of people in the community and they're excited about it. So hopefully, um, we'll have a good turnout for that. Uh, with that, I'll pass it on to Ms. Refkin.
I will be attending the Personnel Committee with you on Wednesday. And then St. Bonnie Fire Meeting that was supposed to be this week is getting moved to the twentieth. And Mount Fire was supposed to be last week and get moved to the twenty-first, so I'll be at both of those next week.
Next meeting. Oh, you'll be at them, but you'll give us an update on the fourth. Yeah, thank you.
In December, both of those.
Thanks.
And they should, Mount should have their truck.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, hopefully.
I know, I know.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, on the Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed, uh, which engineering reports are really expensive, by the way, that's why I asked about this, or, yeah, making the presentation. Um, but, uh, we're moving ahead on some projects for the Dance Hall Creek, uh, which would help on the water quality of Lake Sarah, which is impaired like most of the lakes. And apparently we, we have to kind of clean up the creeks first before we can get money to do things like, uh, the alum treatment, uh, here in Whale Tail. So, so that's a, a big step forward to get that creek, uh, started. And then hopefully we can get some money for, uh, taking care of Lake Sarah, alum treatment there, but that's probably a few years off.
Yeah, yeah.
Work in decades.
Yep, I know, I know how that goes.
So that's about it. The next meeting's Thursday night.
All right, great. Anything else? All right, and with that, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ann, for the second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for all, and we will see you on the thirtieth, right?